By the way, this is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Beckman?
Present.
B. Singer?
Present.
Boss?
Present.
Echus?
Frye?
Present.
Gross?
Present.
Schroller?
Present.
Throm?
Present.
All right. The first item is approval of minutes for the November 13th meeting. Did anybody have any amendments? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, November 13th, 2017, as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. The next item is public comments. Anyone that is not on the agenda that would like to speak may come to the podium, give your first and last name, your address, and your ward. All right, we'll move on to business and discussion items. The first one is the Art Center Agreement. It's on pages seven through thirteen. And then the proposed one, it shows the extension on page seven and the contract that was initially presented on those other pages. And then page thirteen, it has what our extension would be. The only thing I have is at the bottom is you have Marshall County Arts Company, it should say Cooperative.
Change it.
Okay. And then, I didn't know if you guys felt like, the only thing that I didn't see that was addressed in here was the air conditioning. I mean, it specifically states about the plumbing and the heating and the electric, and that, so it doesn't specifically say anything about the air conditioning. However, the last sentence for Article Three says, "In case of major repairs and or remodeling, the parties agree to meet and discuss funding options." So, I guess that's an all-inclusive statement. Do you want to add anything to this, or just approve the extension as presented with that one amendment?
I don't think we need to add anything to it.
Okay. And I guess the only other thing is that, you know, we have this lapse of time. Did you happen to ask, Greg, if that's okay?
If what?
Well, the last agreement ended September 26, 2016, and now we're starting November 20th, 2017. So, we have like a year lapse in there that we?
Generally, let's say landlord-tenant law, if that were in effect, even if the agreement lapses, as long as each party acts as if it were in agreement, the agreement stands.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, we'll just leave it. So, the only change would be to add the, below the manager line, Marshall County Arts Cooperative, CEO period. I did not have a CEO period after it. But the agreement said that. I always thought it was Marshall County Arts Cooperative, and, but... So, anyone would like to make a motion?
Move to the mayor to sign the extension of management agreement between the City of Marysville and the Marshall County Arts Cooperative.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. Hearings, notices and hearings?
Uh, Mayor, this is not a hearing, but this coming Thursday, November the 30th, there will be a informational open house on the US 36th Corridor project through the city limits of Marysville. And the presentation and comments will be by BG Consultants, that's a city hall, and it will be held between six and eight o'clock. That's this coming Thursday.
Okay. So, did they all get a packet like I got?
The?
I know, Darlene and I got it because of the Planning Commission.
I think we sent it out to just you two for the Planning Commission discussion.
I didn't.
Can you go ahead and distribute it to them? They need to know what's in there before the meeting.
Okay. Well, it's, and it's a come-as, it's a come-and-go situation. It's not a, you're gonna come in, you're gonna look at each of the stations, and then you can discuss as well as?
But I think, do you guys want a copy of it?
I do.
I'd like to see a copy.
It's an, and it's an unfinished document, so it's?
Okay. Can you go ahead and copy it for them? Do you all want one? Okay. And you can leave them, you guys mind picking them up here? They'll copy them tomorrow. Is that all right?
Yeah, I'll pick mine up for Wednesday.
You'll have somebody pick yours up?
Yeah, I get them in Wednesday anyways, so.
Oh, okay. So, and that way, at least you can know what questions you want to ask on Thursday night. And I would encourage you all to come if you're able from six to eight, at least to meet them, the people that are working on it, and ask any questions you have once you receive the information. All right. The next item is the consent agenda, which consists of two convention and tourism requests.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
No.
Opposed? Seven oh. The next item is the appropriations ordinance.
Move to approve appropriations ordinance 3663.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah. How come we're getting increased insurance on the slides at the pool this time?
State required. We, because of the new law, Amusement Rides Act, or whatever it's called, they are requiring increased insurance year-round.
So, it's an increase of insurance on the slides?
Yes.
That's a good question.
We are bringing it up to their standards, anyway.
It's actually an increase on our overall liability for all of our, for our whole policy.
Okay.
So, but it will include the slides. Part of it's for the slides, but it's additional liability.
At the pool?
Yeah.
Specifically, pool?
Our limits.
Okay.
Mayor, one item I might point out is, we're paying $1,500 to the Kansas Department of Commerce, and that's the, under ROS, and we'll pay 50% of the cost of the share of the school loan annual payment.
Yeah. So, at least it shows that Austin's participating in the ROS program, or we as a city, I should say, is participating in the ROS program.
Well, as long as that's being said, we pay 50%, as his employer, and the state pays 50%. So, ultimately, Austin ends up with a $3,000 award, so to speak.
To offset student debt.
Yes.
It pays, it goes specifically to student debt.
Right.
To pay down his student debt, I should say. Sorry.
I have a question. The MicroCom Inc., page 18, about fourth item, fifth item down, renew the contract. Is this the SCADA?
Yes.
Telemetry System?
Covers the whole water and sewer system, and parts repairs and such.
Okay. Do you know what year of this contract, what year this is, and do we renew?
On a yearly basis.
It's a one-year contract. What is this? Is this year three for that? Wasn't this brand-new? We installed this thing about, was it three years ago?
I think it's been longer than that.
You mean about the SCADA system that we started?
Yes.
Or the MicroCom agreement?
Well, this $3,025, renew the service contract, one year, 2018, for the telemetry system.
MicroCom went in, in the original building when we built the plant down there on South 17th. So, however old that plant is, that's how long we've had the system installed down there, so.
But didn't it get struck by lightning, and didn't we, didn't we put a new one in there? Didn't we?
Well, we had, at the water shop, am I saying the right word? Water plant.
Plant.
At the water plant, we had that water leak, and it hurt the SCADA system, and they had to come in and refix it.
Okay. Well, then, another question I have, second from the bottom, page 18, Walmart, this is a credit card, and we paid $149 for a Garmin. Can somebody tell me why we did that?
It's a replacement for the chief's vehicle, and he had requested it taken out of special law. So, if that's not taken out of special law, that's a mistake, so.
Well, it's not. We paid $515 on this particular one, and I didn't see where we got reimbursed anywhere.
No, it's, it's not a reimbursement. It's, it's just a replacement for his vehicle, and it's, it's gonna come out of the special law fund.
So, it's gonna come, so instead of the general fund, he's recommending it come out of the special law fund, which he can, he dictates what comes out of there. So, he's still buying it. It's just a transfer from the fund that we need to make?
Right. If, if that's not the case right now.
Because there's no money's coming out of special law on page 15.
Okay. Do we have one of these in area officers' vehicle? Just the chief's?
Just the chief's.
And why is that?
Because he takes that to conferences and uses it for transport and stuff like that.
But doesn't his phone do this, and doesn't the computer that's in the vehicle do this, and doesn't he have a dispatcher that can look up on the computer anyplace he is? He can get that information like that?
He doesn't always have contact with the dispatcher.
Do we pay for his phone?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, we pay for his phone.
And he has a personal phone.
But again, it's being taken out of special law.
It still comes out of the city funds.
And some jurisdictions, too, they, I mean, it's well-advised to not use your phone for it. I mean, that's probably the best argument I can make for it, Norman, is that?
Not use your phone?
Yeah, I mean, I know Manhattan's really cracked the whip on it, and you're, although you're technically allowed to use it for navigation, it's kind of frowned upon. If you're looking at your phone while driving, people are gonna assume you're text messaging.
Well, usually, they're talking to you.
Yeah, serial, serial.
No, the Garmin's just talking to you. The phone's saying, turn right.
Garmin's talking to you, too.
Yeah.
You're looking down at that, too, same thing.
Okay. So, nobody has a problem with this, me?
Well, obviously, Denny does, right?
Yeah.
My concern on this was the street sweeper brooms, and I think I called in, I did call in, and you said, do we switch them every hundred hours?
Every hundred hours.
So, that's every month? So, do we spend $21,000 on broom sweepers per year?
I haven't done the research on that, but it's...
If we, if we're buying that each month, that's $21,000 for broom? Is there, I mean, are we doing something wrong?
No, we're using our street sweeper.
Well, we didn't do that in the past.
Twenty-one thousand?
Yeah, we have.
Twenty, so?
I've been on finance for years now, and I don't recall every month.
Well, maybe not that often, but no, we put, they've replaced some brooms quite often down there.
Do, I hate to say this, but I know you say it's based on hours, but do you go actually look, inspect the brooms?
Yeah, no.
Do they look bad?
A hundred hours is the average. They watch it.
You do look at it?
Yes. It's not?
Imagine the surface depends a lot.
Yeah, those round sweeper brooms, the gutter room out in front's the one that really takes all the wear, because they, I mean, they'll start out that tall, and they'll round them about there before they replace them.
Well, then, the next question is, when we buy this new street sweeper, can we do anything different to save that $21,000 a year? I mean?
If they're made out of the same material, it's gonna do the exact same thing. You're running metal against concrete.
Are the brushes proprietary to the sweeper itself?
These that we, they're putting in now come in a box, and they actually take the sections off and rebuild them down here with the new wires, put them back together.
So, like, there's like a core?
Yeah, and then they put the sections back on.
So, when you look at the new street sweepers, are there any that are designed better to make our brooms last long?
Is that something they advertise as broom, you know?
Yeah.
Broom life, or?
The last salesman that came through said their brooms last 400 hours.
Hey.
That's something.
That's a big plus.
Tell them to bring us one for 400 hours, and we'll give that shot.
Is that an average, or is that just?
That's just what he said.
Are they the only ones that have said something like that?
Yeah. But we're kind of skeptical on that.
Well, we don't run it.
Are they more expensive?
I don't know.
We've been running the wheels off it since we got it back.
Well, I think it's at least a question we know, when we go look at street sweepers, it is a question to consider.
As a maintenance item over time.
Twenty-one thousand a year would kill me, if that's what we're spending. That would be once a month, replacing.
Like I said, I don't know if those, if that's what a box, was that what a box of wires cost, or two cases? I don't know.
I haven't been down there when they got them in, but...
I know they come in in a, a big box.
The big box, yeah.
Maybe negotiate for a couple of years, for years. Like for oil changes, if I can. For price changes.
Okay. Well, the appropriations ordinance is $234,000, $75,000, which is transfers, so it's a low. Last, last meeting, we had $808,000. We had a big one. So, are you guys okay paying for the Garmin?
No.
And, and when you make the motion, will you please state that the Garmin will be taken out, the adjustment will be made out of the special law fund? Motion is second, are you made?
I made my motion to include the special law fund transfer.
Who is my, who's the second?
Keith.
You okay with?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Or it was Bill? Okay. So, our motion now is to, as presented with the $149,000, $149,000, taken out of the special law fund, that adjustment made between the general fund and the special law fund. Okay. Roll call?
Beckman? Singer?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Gross?
No.
Schroller?
No.
Throm?
Yes.
Five two. Where are you gonna say that? Sorry. All right. City Administrator, up, Austin?
All right. First one up is the downtown tree plan, and I included scans of this, but I figured I'd put the larger ones out on the table as well. So, I went around and looked at locations for trees and adjusted it versus what the businesses wanted and would prefer, and left some locations, some tree locations out because the businesses were adamant that they didn't want trees in front of their location. So, what you have in front of you is a proposed tree location where we would have to go in and put new trees, and that includes some locations where we take out the old tree that doesn't belong there or is dying, and put in new trees. And I believe I counted about 20 new trees downtown. So, that's what the first map shows, and the second map shows the final tree locations, which includes all the new trees and all, all the existing trees. And as you can see, it actually ramps it up quite a bit, and I think would give a nicer feel to downtown, to the downtown location. And that's, that's what they came back with.
So, how many trees are you replacing? You have any, you know?
At least two.
Two?
There's one by...
And just because it's not a good type of tree to have?
There's one that's dying.
Oh, by reflections? Is that the one that doesn't look very good?
In front of, let me think, I want to say it was, in front of RSVP.
And it doesn't look very good?
And it's, yeah, it's dying.
And the one by reflections is kind of an oversize.
And then, one by reflections does not belong in the main street setting.
So, you're taking that out?
Taking that one out.
Okay. So, we're replacing two. And so, when we put these in, do we, does it affect at all, like, the light posts?
There will be, there will be some trouble with the, with the conduit that goes through it, but that's not anything different than the existing trees that we have in there. The conduit goes right next to the trees, and that's why we put all the wiring in conduit, so it could stay in one spot. And if we put these trees in and everything goes well, we won't have to bother them for another 10 to 15 years.
So, where these trees are going, we currently have the conduit in, for the speaker system?
For, for the lighting.
For the lighting?
Yeah, the electric.
Well, if we're digging up, or can we put in the, can we fix our speaker system now? If we're digging up?
You'd have to have somebody bore, make the sidewalk.
It'd be much more.
Because, yeah, because the, you can't, you would have to take up the concrete. If you, if you had to fix stuff.
You'd have to pick it up. You could have somebody.
Bore, get the boring machine.
Bore all the way, they can come up.
Put a new conduit in, yeah.
The problem is, is in the light base itself, running the conduit, getting it into it, from underneath.
Right. And so, now, all these that you're adding, are there little squares for these, or some of these you are adding?
Yeah, I went around and walked through, and I talked to Dale about it, and he said that anywhere, I asked him, and I'll double-check with this, but anywhere there, where there's, in fact...
Where you're adding a tree?
Where there's, yeah, there is a location for it. There's only some locations, for instance, in front of Garden of Eden, I believe, is a big rectangle, which I'm kind of skeptical as to whether there's dirt under there, but Dale was reassuring that, that...
Somewhere over there.
Somewhere over there, there's dirt. But each of these, most of these are existing tree spots.
Okay.
Is there any way of saving this tree in front of reflections, just because it doesn't belong there?
Nope.
We can't save it and put it someplace else?
Nope. You, you watched the cedar tree go in. He picked up all the dirt.
Yeah, I did watch that cedar tree. Yeah, I did watch that.
You mean the cypress tree?
The cypress, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, my mistake. The cypress tree, that was a small tree. He had this big, he had to collect all of it. You imagine the size of that tree that's over there, and then how wide the, the branches go out. It's double the size underneath.
It's, it's probably half, halfway under the building, all sorts of, all over the place.
So, what type of trees are you putting in?
Oh, there's a list that we can choose from, and, and I've been discussing with some tree experts on, on what goes great downtown, in downtown settings, and things that don't grow immense, or, and stay under a certain height.
And don't drop fruit that birds like to eat.
And don't drop fruit, or berries, or anything like that. And what types of trees is up for discussion, but, I mean, I had my own ideas, just...
Can they be multicolored, like maples, or, I mean, different colored leaves come, you know, just come fall, you know?
I, and, yes, yes.
You know, I'm talking about the aesthetics of it down there?
Oh, yeah. And I was talking with, with Guttenkopf about types of trees, and he, he's recommending some trees that turn fire red.
Right.
In the middle of the fall, and they look beautiful.
You might want to consult the tree board, too, if you haven't already, just since we have a tree board, this is pretty much in their wheelhouse.
Right.
Because I know that drive over around it.
For forestry at K-State?
Yes. Atchison, there along the Missouri River in the falls, real pretty, all the different colors of trees and stuff.
It's gorgeous, yeah.
Yep. So, going back to the light, so where the trees are going, they'll block some of the lights, or?
No, not blocks, shouldn't block any of the lights.
They will eventually.
In 10 or 15 years, isn't it?
Yeah, that's when they gotta come out again.
Yeah.
Are we not gonna try, I'm sorry, are we not gonna try and put miniatures in there rather than something that's gonna go 30 feet?
It shouldn't go, they shouldn't go 30 feet.
So, they're miniatures? How high will they go?
There's, oh, I have to, it's been a few months since I looked at the, the descriptions of the trees.
The ones, I've looked in another town since you started talking about this, they seem to go up about to the middle of the upper-floor windows, so I don't know if that's about 15 feet or 16 feet.
I was gonna say 15 to 20 feet, yeah.
Yeah. That seems to be kind of the norm height. Then they stunt out, that's kind of the idea.
Yeah. So, that, so what is our estimated cost for 20 trees, putting them in?
Um, under $20,000.
Under $20,000?
That's having them planted and everything?
And a maintenance agreement.
And, and the current ones pulled out and replaced back in?
Yeah.
And if it's $20,000 to put them in, then how much will the maintenance be per year?
Oh, depends on how many trees. Whoops, I gotta...
We want them to maintain them all, so...
No, no, yeah, I know. It's, um, I'd have to, I'd have to go back and look at the quotes, but I don't want to divulge all the information from, because it's not fair. I don't want to have another situation where we go, well, they're offering this, this, and this.
Yes.
But, yeah, that, that quote, I'm thinking all the, it's, it's minimal, under five.
Safe to assume you would want the same people maintaining as installing, so that they know they, there's no conflict about being done right?
Well, the benefit, um, the benefit of having the same person doing it is there's a chance that they, a good chance that they would warranty their trees, and that's one of the comments, one of them made.
So, do we do an RFP for trees and see who all bids? I mean, do you have a good list of people that would bid this?
I, I got three bids in the first place, and, well, two of them responded really well, and the other one wanted a consulting fee.
Did you provide the scope on this? Do they, are they bidding the same thing, the same trees?
I walked them through, I walked them through the whole project. I wanted to get their feel on it. They both, the two that did bid, pretty much gave me the same answer.
Were they bidding the same trees, Austin?
Yes. Same locations. I gave them the same diagram, and, and gave them the same instructions, and, which is why I would go back with this and go, this is our, this is our new diagram of where we want the trees. And I'll talk to the tree board about what sorts of trees we should put down there, and then...
Are they buying from a nursery, or do these people have their own nursery? Because usually, nurseries will guarantee a tree at least a year.
That's what I'm saying. The, the planters, the, the people who would be doing it, they would guarantee their work because they would be maintaining it.
That's, that's why I think you'd want them to lock, stock, and barrel control it, so if there's a bad tree, they replace it.
Yes.
It's just taken care of.
So, is, is, did we bet with this for 2018?
We didn't bet with it, no.
So, where are you getting the money from?
Um, I, since it is a quote-unquote "street improvement," I'd probably take it out of sales tax.
Is, is this something that would be a spring project?
Yes. But it would be ideal to put it, if we are willing, to put the orders in ASAP. Well, I don't want to use those terms. Sometime this winter.
Would it be possible to get more than two bidders, just because?
I'm gonna try.
Okay.
So, are you guys okay with proceeding and spending $20,000 on putting these trees in?
We don't know.
Well, as just a ballpark number, it's not a...
I'd, I'd like to get some numbers, see what the maintenance fees are gonna be, and see what that total figure's gonna look like.
Right.
And then we'll, then we'll know.
If the ballpark is twenty and the maintenance is five, you pretty much want to proceed?
I don't think we could pay city workers to take care of them and guarantee them for five, so.
How often is that coming up to look at, twice a year?
Uh, well, the first, the first year would be a lot of watering, so they'd be up, they'd be up doing that.
Because I know in the springs, that's when everything sprouts and the new growth goes on, and that's.
Well, they're not gonna come up and water the trees every time.
Yes, that would be the idea.
So would all the trees in the downtown district, including all existing ones, fall underneath that maintenance agreement?
We can make that, they wouldn't need the watering, per se.
Well, I wonder where the line is, because you have the Kester Park and the Kester Block Tree, and you start to grow all publicly owned trees.
Just the, I would just.
Just street trees.
Just street trees.
So, but the ones in front, like the Advocate and the Post Office and things like that would be included?
Yes, because those would be our street trees.
They're already there.
Well, yeah, I just want to make sure it was bounded by Elm Street and, you know, Carolina.
After two years, they don't need regular watering, like a new tree that's trying to get established.
Right, yeah, they wouldn't be, they probably wouldn't be watering them, they'd probably be, I'd see if they would prune them back a little bit.
And, you know, really, we get Kim for free. So I'm thinking if, it wouldn't hurt, anytime she could come up here, for her to go around and follow up. Because which one of us knows if those trees are being properly cared for, except they start to wilt. But if Kim could help us save, you know, get her up here to take a look, she's the expert as far as I'm concerned.
These trees are gonna have to be watered more than just two years. Because a tree that isn't ground and away, it gets rainwater. These don't get rainwater, they're sitting in concrete.
Well, that's all we watered, the ones that are there now, so I was just saying.
That's why a lot of them die.
You know, you gotta have a, the store owner has to be in on it with the program too, you know, to keep them watered. Because if they're not in with it, it's not gonna stay.
But you're saying we're not gonna have, the storekeepers.
The idea is for us to take over the complete maintenance, because what they're pouring, or what, the amount they're pouring in compared to what the actual people maintaining them.
And there probably will, there's some store owners that are kind of eager about it. They might be more than happy to, but we can't count on it.
Yeah, can't count on it.
Okay, so he's asking us that, to move forward to the bidding process? Do you think you've given Austin enough things to consider for the bidding process to go forward?
I think so.
Basically, planting the trees, maintaining them for several years?
Talk to the tree board.
And get the tree board involved? And do you want him to come back and tell us what kind of trees they select before they put them in? I know you were upset about the cypress trees, so.
Yeah, very upset about that.
You don't like cypress trees?
She was upset because instead of, she said it drops needles and sap.
It drops needles, it dries all the time, the needles are pointy, it's between two parking lots in the street. They grow to a hundred and twenty feet, there's ten kinds of cypress, only two grow in the United States. One grows in the swamps and floor, and the other's a bald cypress, which that tree is. It grows to a hundred and twenty feet, it spreads its roots out, and it puts out above the ground what's called knees. Can't tell you how many, how many, how many of our lawnmowers we run by trying to mow lawns anywhere near a cypress, because it puts those knees out. But you can't, you put that near the swimming pool, and little kids get out and run, they're always dropping needles. Then you step on those needles, and it's just like stepping on stickers. That was my objection to that tree, and I didn't know it was going in until, what, the day before, the day before it was, it was put in. They're interesting trees, but that thing's gonna be mammoth, the roots are hard, they will kick up the parking lot, they will kick up the street, it will spread.
Okay, so why don't you bring back what kind of type?
Thirty years, you can come back.
Not me.
I told you so.
Okay, so is the council consistent to go ahead and proceed with the bidding process? Yes?
Yep.
Yes, okay. All right, and Austin? Want to go to the next one?
All right.
Anything else from us?
Nope. Okay. Attached is the bid proposal, or the, yeah, proposal from CES regarding engineering services for next year's planned ADA project, ADA ramp project. And the idea was to get a couple of years' worth of engineering in, so we could just keep going with ADA ramps. Not just next year, but the year after that. So with that in mind, I was proposing fifty locations, which would be, the locations each corner would count as a location. Whether one ramp is needed or two ramps, it's one location.
So you could have a possibility then, if you put two ramps in at every intersection of a hundred sites then?
No, 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 it'd be just fifty sites. Fifty, it could be a possibility of a hundred ramps.
Yes, yeah, yes.
Yes, and it could, it could actually end up being two or three years' worth of ramps, depending on how much we budget for it. Initially, I budgeted, or we budgeted fifty thousand dollars into next year's budget to get ADA ramps put in. Starting with the neighborhoods surrounding, down in the downtown area. And I think that's, I included the engineering numbers in there. So I'm estimating thirty, could be forty if we wanted to do the whole fifty. I wasn't really intending to do the whole fifty thousand, so maybe thirty thousand dollars worth of ramps plus engineering for two years.
Austin, are we gonna be getting any grant money for this? I see you're calling this the ADA grant project, are we required to do this?
If somebody takes you to court, we're gonna be required to do it. It's, it's a, right now I've had multiple meetings with various individuals who've come in and requested. And talked to us about getting more accessibility to our area, specifically downtown. There's some individuals that live just blocks away from downtown that say they have to ride their wheelchair in the middle of the street. Because they can't get from one side to the other.
Some of that is also not even at streets, but also at alleys, and also just really badly broken up sidewalk.
Right, right, and with this would be a, I would like to, next year advertise to these areas that we'll be working in. Our fifty-fifty share, sidewalk share program. Because I feel like a lot of people don't, don't know about it. And if we get the word out to these locations, the more people will take advantage of that, that program. And we will shore up some of our sidewalk issues.
To address your question, and I came to talk to Austin today, that, you know, there is KDOT money for this. And why aren't we waiting to get KDOT money?
Yeah, that was my question too.
The KDOT money is going to require you to make a complete project out of it. So it's, you're going to do, you can't just go in and do ramps. You have to make it, you do this ramp and make sure all this sidewalk is good, do this ramp, do this ramp, make all sure. And there's gotta be a beginning and an endpoint. So your endpoint, probably, they're not gonna look kindly if you go, okay, this one, this one, this one, this one, sidewalk all the way. Where does that take you? You're five blocks away from downtown.
Would they pay for the sidewalk as well if they, if they make it wider?
Uh, yeah, I mean, that would be a part of the, that'd be part of the project. We're kind of late, we are late to get, they've already approved all of next year's. And I think two thousand nineteen's TA projects, Transportation Alternative Projects, which is the fund, or the money we're getting for those, the crosswalks. And taking into consideration, we're going to apply for the TA grant for, right in front of Cromies.
Well, you know, what we could do is we could try to address the specific rap for these individuals that have come to you.
Which is, this is actually kind of what it is.
And to leave rest of it till we get a grant for it. Because you hate to do something that there's grant monies available. I mean, that's like throwing tax dollars away that are available to us.
And there are many sidewalks that are very bad condition.
And if they improve the sidewalks as part of the TA project, it's a win-win for the people that are traveling.
What this also does is shows that we are committed to this.
Making a good faith effort.
We are making an effort towards this. We are putting our own money towards it, and that's what any grant application wants. They want to see that we're not just looking.
Well, grant isn't all, we still have to kick in. I've never known a grant that pays a hundred percent. So we still have to kick our money in too.
Yeah, but it's, that is a commitment, but a lot of, a lot of grants don't just, let's say it's an eighty-twenty grant. A lot of grants, people are now going, I'm gonna pay twenty-five, I'm gonna pay thirty percent, so I can get on your good list. Because the grant money is shrinking.
I would like to accommodate the people that have specifically come in to ask.
Absolutely.
But I would also, if we're not gonna really solve the problem, if we're gonna give them a ramp and a bad sidewalk, that doesn't help them either.
Exactly, they can't use that sidewalk, and it's got ramps at both ends.
Yeah, so if you put two ramps in and we don't have a good sidewalk, we've accomplished nothing.
And there are some places where we have new sidewalk and one ramp, and in the middle of the block somewhere, there's one missing, these kind of stopgaps. I know, like, we caught the ones at the drive-through over here at Citizens. And I neglected to bring it up at the time. The only spot I think on all of thirty-six now that's not gonna have ramps is at the car wash up there. Because there's still those two driveways without ramps. But that's just an example of places that kind of finish it, so that, I mean, it's only a stopgap. But that way, if you tell people, well, we have these routes that are completely accessible, and kind of try to, I think, link it all together.
Right, and that was, that was initially the kind of idea, to go through and just replace the curb, the stand-up curb. Leaving, doing as much as possible. And I was hoping, I mean, if it is the council's desire to go through and replace sidewalk, that's, that's another thing we can do with the money.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we have the street committee go walk, and he's gonna show you guys which ones he wants to do, and see if it makes sense? Because somebody needs to look at these and see if this makes sense for us to proceed, I think.
I think whoever's riding these wheelchairs should be involved in this. They know, they know where places are that put them stop.
Well, we just need, we just need to have a general route, I mean, a route that is accessible to them.
If you know these people, maybe they'd be interested in being involved with that, giving some input. And you can, I mean, you could always make an ad hoc committee.
Something I said we could do, you know?
So who's on the street committee?
Me, Bill.
You two? Can you, can you take some time, you have some time?
I have lots of time right now.
Bill will pick you up, and I just, you know, Bill?
Bill's going out of here.
Uber Bill?
Uber Bill.
Can you guys just ride by, see what, if you make sense, and look at the sidewalks accordingly, and just kind of give us some feedback?
My thought on it was, you know, well, if we can look at it and then come back, maybe we need to only do twenty thousand dollars this year, and.
And then do the TA grant.
And then apply for the TA grant, so you know, we at least did twenty thousand to get started, you know?
And if you, I think, you know, go ahead and make a plan, like, do this this year, what we can do with the TA grant. If it doesn't come through, what we'll do next year?
And just keep building on it, you know, eventually.
Yeah, but and also, if we need to go ahead and bite the bullet and do some sidewalk, or go to, go up to people and ask them to do sidewalks? And see if they're willing to do it? I mean, maybe that's what we need to do as well. Maybe it hasn't crossed our mind that their sidewalk is an inconvenience to these people, so.
And some of the, some of the stairways, like to access from the west part of town to, say, go to the grade school. I mean, there's some of them that are closed off, but some of those steps need, need repair.
Yeah, are you talking about these steps that are right over there?
Yes, some of them out there. And then a lot of times, the kids walk in the street, have to walk in the street.
Because the sidewalks are bad?
Or there are no sidewalks, or the, or the steps are closed off.
Well, it sounds like we have to address sidewalks overall in our community.
And like Todd said, we've got a lot of those step-up alleys. You go halfway through a block, and there's, there it is, there's a step-up. And it would take one of these on either side to accommodate a wheelchair.
So then you're looking at four in a block.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so you guys, I know it's Christmas season, but you guys think you can find a time to get together with Austin before the next meeting?
And this would be really ambitious, but you could take that master street map, you know, like they did with services? And you could go visit every alley and street crossing in town and mark them all out.
What time do you get off work?
He wants to be re-associated with the street committee, right? He wants to be added to it? Okay, so we'll wait, yes.
I'd like to ask something of Tony here on this engineering, this engineering plan. Hi, Tony. This engineering plan says a thousand two hundred fifty-seven dollars plus a hundred seventy-six for a street corner for this project. And the engineering cost is ten thousand fifty-seven dollars. My question is, each and every one, they're gonna be the same thing, over and over and over. Why are we looking at doing an engineering on each and every block of the fifty? Why is it necessary? It's the same thing over and over and over. Why can't you do a prototype? What?
That's incorrect, actually. It depends on the elevation change from the street to where it connects back to the existing sidewalk. Sometimes that can be done in six foot with just a ramp, sometimes you have to go back twenty foot to connect.
But these guys who put these in, this is their living, this is what they do for a living. I've always been one who has said we spend more money on engineering reports than we do on the job to get the work done.
And there again, I differ with you on the comment you just made, because according to where our sidewalk intersections are made in Marysville. From the curb to that sidewalk on the property owner is fifteen feet. We do not need to design that to come six foot in, we need to design it from that corner all the way up to that first fifteen feet. At the property owner's edge of the property owner. We don't need to have it six foot up and then narrow it back in. We need to make the whole intersection that wide.
And this is the engineering report before we ever put a brick, before we ever pour cement, I mean, before work gets done to actually make this come to fruition.
Am I correct, Austin, in my statement?
Will you make the whole corner like that?
You have to tie in back to existing sidewalk somewhere, whether you want to go all the way to where they meet is fine.
Where they meet is where it needs to go.
But you have to provide that in an ADA route. So anything up north of thirty-six is gonna be almost impossible, because it's so steep. You will not get it without tremendous amounts of switchback, I mean, it's just not reasonable to do, so.
That's why there's some interesting cuts, probably two down here at like Walnut and Tenth Street. And that, where all those crossings went in, there's some interesting ramps.
Yep.
And if you ever drive through Fairberry on Highway fifteen, they did all the ADA ramps along there. And that's what they have is switchbacks all over, rails, every corner is switchbacks and rails.
Takes, you take shots at every sidewalk joint and you evaluate how you're gonna get there. Because there's such tight slope requirements with ADA.
Based on fifty, do you have any idea each, how much each one will cost for us to put in? You have a general idea?
Well, I think I've seen them usually eight hundred to a thousand per site.
Thousand per site?
Just depends on how much sidewalk you have to replace to get back to existing.
That's just a good ballpark number.
How much rock you have to blast out.
Yeah, like I said, and what we were anticipating was doing the preliminary design on all of them, and then coming back with Austin, saying, is it reasonable to do this one? Because you might have to replace a hundred-foot sidewalk or put in handrails.
Oh, so you're saying this is not a good corner to do.
And might decide, yeah, we're not gonna spend ten grand to fix this one, just not reasonable.
And we were gonna contract this out, right? We're doing this in-house, okay.
Thank you, Tony.
Thanks, Tony. So do you mind, Bill and Kevin, taking a look? Tell us what you think? Okay.
Oh, Maureen, this is supposed to come out of the general fund?
Well, that's because we have it budgeted there, Austin pointed that out to me.
It's budgeted.
Under the street department, on page forty-three.
Okay, have we, have we thought about a grant for this? There's gotta be something in ADA for a grant for this. This is kind of like everybody wanting to rush and put in the brick streets, you know, and us pay for it all. And then Carla and Austin and David Richardson and Darlene went to a convention to find out there's money available for these brick streets, because they're considered historic.
And that's true.
We've gone the burden all along.
Like, does USDA come in and, on this USDA have some grants?
USDA would give us some loans.
Just loans?
Loan guarantees almost exist.
And sometimes they'll, if you're in need enough, they will forgive some of your loan. But it's not always free.
There's probably a lot more needy out there.
Is there any other kind of grant for disability specific?
I haven't found one besides the TA grant with KDOT.
How about you looked?
Yeah.
Geometric improvement would cover some of that.
Geometric, that's, if it's right next to the, to the highway that you're working on.
There's a lot of mark, a lot of mark.
I mean, there's some ramps, right? I mean, everything on seventy.
We should have all the ramps on thirty-six.
And they just did the seventy-seven one.
Seventy-seven south, so yeah.
So how do we get KDOT to do that on seventy-seven south?
They did it themselves. That was, that's a yearly project. They just, they didn't ask, they said, hey, you wanna, we're gonna do this.
Yeah, let's do this again.
Now do it on our side streets. Okay, all right, so we're good? Next meeting, we'll come and address it again? Anything else, Austin?
I don't have anything else.
Next meeting, okay. Okay. You know, one thing in the report I haven't seen is overtime reports. We used to get those on a regular basis, can you provide those maybe? An up-to-date overtime report, maybe through November?
Oh, we got one back in June, I think.
Yeah, but that's, we used to get them every month. Debbie, he's looking at you.
Oh, he is?
Okay, just provide it to us, just so we have a ballpark picture of overtime, as we've done so far. And Debbie, you're up.
I just have the letter attached from Cooper Malone McLean. Rickens reached out, and the fee for filing the Emma has increased from a thousand to fifteen hundred. And we pay a thousand for the PBC and a thousand for the city. So it would be fifteen hundred for PBC and fifteen hundred for the city. And the last agreement you can see was dated two thousand fourteen. The fees haven't changed since then, so I think this is their increase, hopefully for another three years.
So I think it's funny, they increased, they did not increase the failure to file, but they're responsible to file it, so that's nice. If they make the mistake, they'll only keep us $500. But, so it's gonna go from two to three, two thousand to three thousand, half of it comes out of the PBC. So are you guys okay with that, make a motion to accept that? Is it called an addendum?
Move to accept the Cooper Malone McLean contract renewal.
No, it says addendum number one.
Addendum number one, okay, this is addendum number one. To reflect the changes of the Continuing Disclosure Services Agreement dated twenty-seventh of May, two thousand fourteen. Turn and execute. Yeah, terms is written. I second it.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh.
The second thing I had tonight was on the airport hangars. I have a copy of a lease here, and it does say that the leasing shall maintain the hangar on said lease premises in a good state of repair. And shall maintain all exterior area adjacent to the hangar in a reasonably clean, neat, and attractive condition. It's further understood that no personal property shall be stored outside the hangar. It's expressly understood that for safety purposes, the outside area adjacent to the hangar space shall be kept free of any debris or materials, supplies, equipment, machinery, or parts thereof.
So I did go and look at the hangars that are out there, I don't know which one is yours, Todd, which is probably good, right?
The best one?
Yeah.
Not really.
So anyway, the ones on the right, when you pull in, three of them, well, two of them have bad rust. One has paint chipping off, it doesn't have rust, but the paint is all chipping off. Two are in really good shape, and two are okay. So it's really just the three that have the bad rust and the paint chipping off. I think, you know, the fact that it says attractive, they need to maintain them in an attractive manner. Did you go look after we left here today? Did you agree that there were three?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Very noticeable, very noticeable.
So, and what recourse do we have according to lease agreement? Do you agree, Todd, you go out there, do you agree that there's three that are rust, two rusted?
I know the one you're talking about that's paint chipping for sure. And I know, yeah, there's one that, whatever, I mean, the tin's older or whatever, but the field of the tin away from the edges is a lot of surface rust. And there's the one that has the door kind of half hung on, I think that.
Well, I noticed the rust. One, somebody was there with their hangar door open, so I don't, I wouldn't have known what was going on there. But I assume that it's a, you probably agreed with me, Vic, that there were three?
Yes. And I think that we should have some saying what color they are. I mean, not a red one here and a green one over there.
Well, I don't think we stipulated that in the lease. I just said it has to be attractive.
Can we plead with them or something or offer them three neutral colors or something?
30 days, 30 days to comply.
So what we do next is we send them a letter and say, we don't believe that you're in?
I don't think they can paint in this weather. It's still too cold for them.
So we need to deal with this in April or in the spring?
I would understand that keeping them rust-free, whether that means replacing the tin or painting, but I don't know that good galvanized should be required to be painted.
Are you talking about the one that's tipping?
No, I mean, I, once you paint one, you kinda have to keep painting it. But that's kind of why I would take issue with a good galvanized being repainted. The one that's rusty that you're talking about, I could see.
Well, there's actually two that are kinda rusty.
Yeah, you're right. I can picture one, but you might be right.
So you're okay with us asking them to paint that in the spring?
And say, I mean, you can say it needs to be, what, like in a consistent color? And I think there's some language to that. We have in our other ordinances, don't we? As far as making sure places look consistently decent? I don't know how you wanna phrase that.
The color that Landl has painted his large hangar, I think that'd look really nice if everybody had taken that. Why not? What's wrong with that?
Just 'cause he painted it brown don't mean anybody else has.
And he didn't actually paint it. It's like factory-based.
That's what it is. Factory color of that tin.
So we're not gonna, so we're not gonna bring this up till maybe February? When can you first paint?
March, April? In March, April.
March, April?
Yeah.
So you have plenty of time to draft a letter up and run it by Craig and make sure it's okay. Are you guys all right there?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to ask Austin, do we have FAA inspection on that, on this airport? Have you ever had an inspector come in to talk to you?
We did the drug one recently and then not necessar, I mean, I'm sure they come fly through anonymously every once in a while.
I don't mean to fly through, I mean walk the grounds.
I mean, fly in and walk the grounds.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause I know there's at least one hangar there that's got piping in there. It looks like plumbing or something. Might be the one you're talking about with the door hanging off. But from what I know of FAA regulations, there's not to be anything stored on an airport except airplane parts or an airplane in the hangars. I mean, instead of being used to store anything else exclusively.
We said that in the lease, didn't we? Didn't it say what? Oh, that was on the outside.
Well, then that one's not compliant.
But also it said on the inside, didn't it say?
No, it didn't say on the inside. But that's FAA and it supersedes whatever we have, whatever rules we set.
Personal property.
The one with the hanging door does not have a plane in it?
Sure.
There's several that don't have planes in them.
Yeah, they don't. And it is personal property stored in there. And that's a violation. I just wondered if they'd ever brought that to your attention.
Okay. So we will, we'll get letters prepared to be sent out for the painting to make our airport look better. All right. So we will, is that it?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so we'll move to standing committees on the street. Someone brought, there was a semi that broke in half that went right on our new asphalt. And Austin said he did go look at it. Somebody said it was a great big mark. I don't know who, see who it said. But Austin said it didn't damage the surface.
It kinda took a little bit off the top, but nothing, nothing that's gonna damage it naturally.
It didn't do as much damage as that plane did out here on the runway. It didn't do that. But there is one long, it's about this long.
But it's a mark of indentation?
It's really just, it's superficial, really.
So.
You can see, you can see the aggregate underneath the black, but, so that's the only odd part of it. But it's really fine.
Took the oil off the surface.
So if somebody asks about it, at least you can say that Austin went and checked it out and said that it's a superficial. Okay, and the status of the claim, can you give us a quick update? What they need to do?
They are waiting on the concrete people to come in and do the rings around the manholes. And then they.
Are they gonna diamond that, all those?
They, I forget how they cut that. They shouldn't in the plans. I'll look at the plans.
They still gotta replace some curb and gutter by winters down there.
Yes. Yeah, and, yeah, that's.
And they're gonna raise, raise the rings up so everything's smooth then?
Smooth it out, yep. That's what it calls for. And then I was told today that they are going to be striping tomorrow.
So do they have a tentative completion date? Like 90 days from the beginning?
They had 30-some working days. I think, I forget, I go back and forth between projects, but I think 35 working days.
So they expect you to have it done this year?
They're putting that thermal plastic down, aren't they?
Crucial to us is, once it's completed, then we can get the KDOT money back, so.
Yep.
Question I had for you, Austin. I noticed this time when Hall Brothers laid the striping out on it, that last time when it hit 7th Street, it narrowed down in the middle. I noticed when Hall Brothers put their temporary marking down, the three lanes go all the way down to 5th Street now.
The plans call for it to go back down to two lanes at following 9th, I believe. And I just looked at that. Though, because of the parking on the sides and just how it's all set up, the area between 9th and 8th are two different turn lanes, I believe. And then, and then it's two lane from there then on out. With some turn lanes going here.
No, I'm just curious, 'cause like I said, the way Hall Brothers has it now, it has the.
If you follow that up by 17, it's just one line and that's not what the plans call for. So, yeah, it's, they just laid it how they laid it.
Okay. Like I said, I was just curious. I thought it was kinda unique the way it was paved out.
It's nice and smooth.
It is that.
Okay, so we're still working and that's an update on that. You guys have anything else on the street?
On Broadway, I think the Christmas lights on the poles look really nice. I noticed that the pole by wagon wheel was not on tonight.
They're working on it. There's something, something that's wrong with that whole line down by, down by the wagon wheel.
And how's Timber Creek and Ashford coming? I haven't driven out there lately.
It's done. What they're doing, I think they.
The four squares are done? All four segments?
The ones that were doing, they were doing.
They just did half of it. They did the north half.
Yeah, the ones that were all broken up.
They didn't have to do the south half?
They, they just, they did what was broken up and then a little bit more.
Is that okay? Have you driven out there?
Well, it's, they got rid of the sinkhole there.
Yeah.
Basically.
So are they working on Hometown Drive then, where that other bad concrete is?
That was, I believe it was next.
It's next?
Possibly, yeah.
But I see.
We're gonna discuss that.
They haven't marked, they haven't marked out there coming out of that Country Living or Country Place. They had it marked there, you know, you said the water come out of there when it rained and then they, they put out a white deal there and they put up, and they've had it flagged it for a long time. Are they gonna do anything with that? That was asphalt there.
Country Place.
Well, where it comes out out there, where Bulldog Apartments are, whatever that is.
Keating Drive?
Keating Drive.
Okay.
They have it marked out there. They put white mark out there on the asphalt a long time ago and flagged it all. And I thought they were gonna do something out there with the asphalt there.
They probably are, but it, projects come up in between that are probably more important. But it's just getting from here to here, it's a challenge.
Well, if you're talking about 11th Road, are you talking about 11th Road?
Well, you said where the water come out when it rained so hard and come out and went across.
Well, it shot it onto the street.
Yeah.
So they went back and they did cut it out. They don't, I don't think they cut it out big enough because the, you know, it's a small area that they cut out. I think they need to make it bigger.
But it looked like they were gonna take a chunk of asphalt out there and maybe put different asphalt in there or something, 'cause they flagged it a long time ago.
Well, that whole street is patched so poorly. So, once we get this TA or Access Management Plan done, we need to kinda figure out how to get that fixed. 11th Road, 12th Road, Keystone.
We already have an engineering plan done on that road, right? Yeah, we did.
Estimate.
11th Road, yeah.
11th Road, we did.
We're talking about that that comes out of, out on 11th Road, right?
Yeah, 11th Road. I think we went ahead and paid the engineering for the drainage as well, didn't we?
We did.
Yeah.
Tony, that we did the drainage on the road, Tony?
Yeah, we did a second engineering plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, they did the road, I know.
Was that done according to the engineering plan?
Tony, can you come up to it for me? Just off the cuff.
Yeah.
So we're talking the 11th Road. Poor Tony. So when we, when that was done, was a bicycle lane included in that?
No.
It was just for two lanes of traffic?
Correct. No.
Are we able to put a bicycle lane in there?
Yes.
Based on the culvert we put in there?
Yes. I think you'll probably need, I mean, potentially need right-of-way or, that'll be, that'll be a challenge, but it's doable.
Yeah, I mean, we have that bike lane coming from 11th Road North. It makes sense to continue on. And people say, they say they don't have a place to walk on 11th Road. What are you thinking?
You don't, you don't have a place to walk.
Yeah, so I'm thinking if, you know, whatever.
Down to Keating Drive and then you can walk back.
We talked, I mean, internally about, you know, that sidewalks on the east side separate from the road, which is ideal.
You mean closer to the fence posts rather than on the road itself? Rather than a bike lane?
Up at the top of the hill, you get past.
Yeah, we have, we have a sidewalk there.
Ideally, you could continue that and not put the walking traffic next to the.
But then you don't, then you lose a bike, then you lose a bike lane though. I mean, can you?
You can ride on a sidewalk outside downtown.
There isn't a sidewalk out there.
I know, but now, then we have people walking and.
Oh, I know. There's a lot of traffic out there in the mornings on that path.
Yeah. Well, the, the people walk and ride bikes on North Street and, and all the time, do both of those, so. But you think there's a width, we could fit that in?
You might need more. I mean, there's places where that ditch gets, the back soaks are very steep. And if you start either widening the pavement, you're gonna start encroaching in your ditch, which pushes everything further out.
There's no room to widen that. That goes right up to that ditch. There's not, there's not room to widen to a bicycle.
You'd have to buy.
Same thing we did going north on 11th Road. We got more easement and widened everything out.
I don't think there's room for easement there.
Yeah, there is.
It goes to the edge and then it drops off about like this into that ditch. Are you talking about going the other side of the ditch? On the east side, put a sidewalk there separate from the road?
Well, we, let's think about this. We put the drainage ditch on the east side of 11th Road. So we would want the easement on the west side. Is that correct?
Yeah.
To, if we were to make a bike lane there? And that would be consistent with what is on the north side of 11th Road. So that would make sense.
That's gonna be an awful expensive easement.
Yep. Excuse me?
That'll be an awful expensive. I don't think you can afford to, to put that easement on that side. You're gonna have to move all those poles or put the easement behind those poles and.
We have, we have electric poles along there?
Oh, yeah, on the west side.
On the west side?
You got a natural gas line on the other side too. It's right there too, so, I mean, it's, what way you wanna go with it?
Challenges, yeah, or whatever, whichever way you go.
So, so who moves the poles?
Who will move them?
The owners?
Probably West Star.
Okay. Any other questions for Tony? Okay. Thanks, Tony.
Big price.
Big price.
All right. Anything else on the street? Water, on water wastewater? Did you guys see that there was a thank you from Deep Creek?
Yep.
That was pretty impressive. I don't think we've ever had a contractor write a thank you.
What'd he say?
It was in your information packet on the backside of this letter. And they just said, "Thank you for the opportunity to work in your town. We appreciate the help, enjoyed working with Tony Dever, and the plans were accurate and any questions we had were answered promptly."
He was looking forward to doing the rest of it.
I know, but, okay.
That's a good way to get.
But this impressed me. I don't think we've gotten these before, so.
They were real nice people to visit with and stuff. A couple times I stopped up there and talked to them, so.
Yeah, so, anyway, that's kudos to them. The only other thing I have, you know, the water and sewer department uses, does a lot to close down the pool. Did we transfer those wages to the pool when they work on that?
No. Well, sometimes we did in instances where we put the, well, they didn't do the driveway, but when we do big projects, but no.
But not on the closing process?
Not that I know of.
You think we should?
Closing process, should've just been opening up a few valves, letting it go.
How many hours they spend on winterizing the pool, the water and sewer guys?
Well, including taking down all the canopies and winterizing the pipes and taking the showers off, quite a few minutes.
More than 40?
No, not more than 40.
40 man-hours?
Well, no, not more than 40. Shouldn't be more.
That's not very much.
Anyway, I'm just thinking if, if our water sewer guys are using, working on the pool.
Five guys working for a day.
That's what, oh, okay.
So I'm just throwing that out, that I think if they're working strictly on the pool that day, that pool should pay up to that expense.
Yeah, five men.
No, I was telling her what, what it could be. Yeah.
Explaining it to me.
Okay, well, I'm just throwing that out. Parks and, anybody else have water wastewater? Parks and Rec, did we start the drainage up like you?
No.
No. I saw a trencher.
It wasn't as of today when I went by.
I thought I saw a trencher in there. What was the trencher for?
That was for the Kestner, Gazebo.
Oh, that was for the Gazebo lines. Okay. And what about the dump closing? When do we usually close it? When do we usually close it?
It's already closed.
Is it?
I mean, uh, I mean, it's on the winter hours now.
Yeah, but do, don't we close it, close it down?
Yeah.
It snows.
Yeah, typically, typically, when, usually when the leaves are gone or it snows.
The streets are burnt.
So, it's still open on Saturdays and Wednesdays.
And Wednesdays, right now, yeah.
'Cause I went out there last Monday and there was a lot of unhappy people that don't read the paper or, uh-
So, maybe we should notice this. The dump hours right now are one to five on Saturday and Sunday and four to six on Wednesday.
Yep.
That's what we have over here.
Three thirty to five thirty.
Three thirty to five thirty. And so, will they probably close into the year? So, what, normally happens, tell me.
Well, uh, if it snows, it'll probably close it down.
Whatever, it snows, okay.
However, the weather's nice.
Or the weather's nice, or, yeah, I mean, it's-
People still hauling stuff out there.
I went out there, I went out there Wednesday. I bet there was twenty-some trucks out there while I was just up there unloading my little dab of stuff, coming and going.
Will the street sweeper be going on all the streets?
Yeah.
Eventually?
They, I mean, they have their progression. They've been going through them recently.
They have a route?
Yeah.
A street sweeper route?
Yep.
You might wanna see where your street is on the route. And, um-
I had a guy tell me, he has liability insurance, he's kind of a contractor, that he would cut the trees going down the lane at the landfill and, and for the wood and clean it up before you could drive in there without the trees hanging over.
See, they did one in there last year, and what they do, they trimmed off about two feet off of a limb and left the rest of it out there.
Who did that?
The city did.
The street, the street crew did.
And so, you're saying there's somebody that would-
He approached me about it, that he would go in and he's got, I told him, I said, "You have to have liability insurance to do that." All he wants is the wood.
Send them my way.
I will.
Yeah, 'cause he talked to me about it, too. He'd, he'd put the brush where it belongs and take care of the brush, just for the wood. 'Cause he says it scrapes his trucks when he goes in there.
Okay, awesome. That's a win-win for us. Um, speaking of the dump, and I know we just approved this last week, but I have a really hard time when we have one seasonal person still working and we're not giving them a Christmas gift certificate. We give them, we gave them the full-time and part-time. But we only have one seasonal person working right now and we don't give them anything. I have a problem with that.
They were excluding one individual.
Well, I, you know, I think-
We have other seasonal.
Well, we have other seasonal, but they're not working anymore. The seasonal people, you know, they weren't at work three or four months, I understand, but this seasonal person is still working. So, I think what our policy should be, that we give, give certificates to part-time and seasonal people who are still working at Christmas time. Don't you think? Twenty-five bucks, don't you think we should give that person? I, I just feel bad excluding this one employee.
Well, the problem is, like, let's say January or February, we get one heck of an ice storm that comes in, you know? We're gonna get in the phone, probably, and call her and have her go out and set so people can haul it in, so our crews aren't, or they have in the past, anyway. So, our crews don't have somebody out there, they can be around town helping pick stuff up. So, I mean, I mean, yeah, it says seasonal, but really, in reality, if, if we need her because of an ice storm or something, she's at our beck and call if, if she's available to come in and work.
So, are you okay to, uh, give a gift certificate for twenty-five dollars to the seasonal person who's still working at this time?
Yep.
Somebody wanna make that motion?
I move to give our seasonal person that's working up to December-
That's working currently.
That's working currently, twenty-five dollar gift certificate for Christmas.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any further discussion?
It's a Chamber Buck's gift certificate?
Yes.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, I feel much better about that.
It is Sonic, Sonic's on that list.
Okay, anything else on Parks and Rec?
The broken pipe at the pool, will it fix that in spring?
Yeah, when we can, uh, we're gonna get it done before, obviously, before the pool opens back up.
Under the cement?
Under the cement. It's just gonna take, um, uh, it's gonna take the time available to get our guys there.
Are we gonna do it?
Yeah. 'Cause it, we break it, I mean, unless you want me to go out and find a contractor to do it, but we were planning on doing it.
So, is this a pipe that we're gonna repair and then put cement back over it? Or are we gonna reroute it?
Yes.
Repair it and put it back.
Our guys have already started on it.
I think we should have done it.
Aren't we not, we're not asking to do that again? I mean-
I don't know, that's why, that's why I was asking. I didn't know if we needed to get the people, the pool up here, have them pull it out and find out what the problem was.
Is it too shallow?
I suggested that three meetings ago.
I know.
It's under eight inches of concrete, um, and it shouldn't, it shouldn't be too shallow.
I just wondered if it was possibly a shallow issue, whether we shouldn't go deeper in putting it back or-
You'd have to run, you'd have to run a lot of, if it's shallow a long ways, you'd have to run a lot of concrete and stuff.
So, I was wondering if there's a swag in the pipe or something there that, that held that water, they didn't, that when they were blasting it, that didn't slip?
Excuse me. Has, has anybody else had a problem with this that has the same pool design?
I haven't heard.
'Cause they use the same design all the way.
I know.
Norton, amongst others, Clay Center, same pool.
Seneca? Actually, you know what? We should call Norton and Clay Center and ask them if they happen to have the same pool pipe break.
They might go, "Yeah, funny enough."
Yeah, you, you wanna call Norton and who, who else do you said has-
Seneca.
Seneca? Well, Seneca doesn't have the same pool.
Same company.
He did it.
Same company.
Belleville just got here.
Belleville just got one from the same design.
Norton's is literally identical. It looks like he just superimposed it.
Just, just call him, or call their city clerk.
Like I said, they never blast that, you know? If they knocked a deal out and that pipe come down, I don't, something's caused it to-
Pretty sudden break.
Yeah.
Okay.
And did they get the rings?
We're designing, we're also designing, uh, something to go over the top of the, the base, um, to seal in that seal that is down there.
Oh, are you talking about what you want to repair for winter?
They've got it filled in, anyway, don't they?
Yeah, for the most, there are some places we need to go back and, and do it, yes. But, uh, like I said, we're gonna get, we're hopefully gonna get either rubber thing to go over the top of them. Kent knew exactly what I was talking about when I brought it up, 'cause, uh, flange-
Right.
-to, to make the water go that way. So, we don't have to deal with, uh, it going down and, and, and worrying about it.
So, you'd rather have the contractors look into this?
I would.
You wanna make, you wanna make a motion on that?
You're talking about this pipe thing? Or are you talking, the broken pipe?
He was talking about something else.
I was talking two different things. Talking about the pipe in the first place and then the, the grouting around all the metal structures down.
And which one are you talking about? Keith, the pipe?
The contractors, and contractors for the pool that had anything to do with this or-
So, you're talking about the broken pipe?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, it's probably not a bad idea to have that. You told them that it's broken and they just go?
I haven't told any, that's-
Well, when I brought that up, what, about three meetings ago, y'all said, "Well, their, their warranty's out." And I said, "Contact them, anyway. This should be a matter of pride, of workmanship, that we're so new into this and we're having problems like this." And this is major.
I think we should contact them.
I think we oughta give them a call and tell them, hey.
We should, too.
As long as it's not your idea, it's a good one.
Do you hear what he said? Did you hear what he said? Say it again, Todd.
No, I, I'm sure I have.
He said, "As long as it wasn't my idea, everybody thought it was a good idea."
Yeah, so, we'll call the pool design as well, as well as the other two people that have a pool design just like ours and make sure that it's not a consistent problem. Anything on Parks and Rec? Sematary and Airport?
Airport looks real nice.
Yeah, it does.
Beautiful, Joe.
Police and Fire, I saw Dave Richardson got a grant. Did he get, those, uh, that, that forestry grant?
Yes.
Did that cover the whole cost or half of it?
It's a half and half, yeah.
Well, thank you to David Richardson for getting that, what, about twenty-eight-hundred-dollar grant or something?
Yep.
So, thank you, Dave. Anything else on Police and Fire?
Um, that forestry grant, are you talking about what they just bought the, the suits for? Yeah, well, we have to, I was talking to Debbie about that today and, uh, I was looking for the money. When do we get the money? Well, we have to present that to them after we paid it, so we have to show them our paid receipt before they, before they reimburse us. And it wasn't a hundred percent, was it, Debbie?
He said fifty percent.
Fifty percent? Well, still, it's a lot.
Yeah.
Better than, better than nothing.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Okay, Finance and Admin?
Today, I contacted Manhattan and asked, uh, where they were and what they had done on their, um, shipping containers. And they haven't finalized anything yet, but Abilene, Wamigo, and Junction City have, have done ordinances and asked Debbie to contact them and-
To look at theirs?
Yes, to look at theirs.
Do you know most of the city clerks? Okay. All right. Good to have those connections. Thank you, Darlene. And, uh, O'Reilly, you know what's going on with O'Reilly? Anything going on with O'Reilly?
They got contractors to build it.
They do? So, it's proceeding on, it's just, you don't, you don't have any idea when they're gonna break ground or anything? Okay. Anything else understanding committees? Don't have any, uh, determinations, do not have a city attorney. I do not know of any reason to have an executive session. I will state that we'll have, do, uh, that informal Austin's review at the next meeting, so, you know, have your goals, his goals. We'll talk about it, uh, next week. And, um, so, Roundtable Parade this Saturday at ten-thirty. I know you guys all wanna participate, so, um, I don't know if you guys wanna drive all together or you guys wanna all take golf carts and four-wheelers down? What do you think? Who's gonna participate in the parade? Okay, so, are you, how are you traveling, Kevin?
However I can.
Can you however you can? Whoever will take you with them?
Whoever will take me, yes.
Okay, well, you can ride with me if you want to.
Okay.
So, um, you want, you guys wanna, you wanna, you wanna get your golf carts and things like that? Four-wheelers and take them down?
Well, I think that's kinda fun, but, you know, for all of us to get together, it'd probably be easier on everybody to travel in one vehicle. I wouldn't mind. I've got, I've got something I can bring in to town.
You got something to bring in? Denny, are you gonna go in the parade?
I will.
Do you have a golf cart or a four-wheeler or anything? Keith, you gonna go in the parade?
I'm not gonna be here.
Okay, you gonna go in the parade?
I'm gonna try.
You gonna do your golf cart or something? How about you, Darlene?
I'll be in the parade, but I don't wanna get my golf cart. I can't, I can't get it.
You can't get your golf cart out?
No.
Mayor?
Yes.
May I suggest that we offer our, uh, city council persons elect to have the option to be in the parade as well?
To join us, sure. Do we wanna ride on a fire truck, then?
No, 'cause Santa's coming on the fire truck. We would be-
We can be a secondary tire.
We're trying to show up Santa's car ride.
Yeah. Hey, didn't we decide we could have brush truck? We could all sit in the back of the brush truck?
He's coming mixed up.
The new brush truck, can't we all ride on that?
On what? On what?
Well, Dave will find us a fire truck. You wanna ride on fire trucks?
That's fine.
Not really.
No? Do you wanna-
You wanna ride on your golf cart? Okay. Well, okay, we, we all, we can all ride differently. We'll get a fire truck, we'll ask Dave for a fire truck, and, um, anybody that wants to go in a four, I have a four-wheeler now.
There you go, Kim.
So, you can ride with your own four wheeler. You can throw the candy, so, okay.
Well, I drove Miss, uh, Merry Christmas last year in your convertible, so have they taken care of her or is she?
I think she's going on a fire truck.
Is she?
Yeah. So, we'll ask Dave, uh, will you do that for me? Ask Deb for a fire truck? What about you, Todd? Are you gonna be in the parade?
I'm in Texas, sorry.
You're in Texas? Oh, shoot.
I was gonna be at this last week, but-
So, Bobby, you're walking, riding on the fire truck with us or a four-wheeler or anything? Diane? Jason? Who's not here? Terry?
Terry.
Terry's, Terry has his tamale. He'll probably wanna take his tamale wagon down. Maybe? Okay. So, the parade is at ten-thirty, so we'll try to meet around ten o'clock down on Fourth Street. Should be fun. We can throw candy, FYI. All right. Um, enough about the parade. The workshop is next Monday at what time?
Five fifteen.
Five fifteen on the fourth. And, um-
We've invited our, our ex, haven't we? To this, to the workshop?
The workshop is an open session, but anybody's welcome to come this next, on December fourth, right here at five fifteen.
Yeah, you might wanna get a taste of this.
Our purpose of having this meeting is to make sure there's some long-term plans in place when you come in, so you're not starting with a blank slate. Two other quick things, which I thought, I, you know, I, we participated in that If I Were a Mayor contest, and I had these seventh graders write essays, and they brought up two things that I thought we probably needed to implement. One was, one said there's no basketball court in the city park. And they're right. There is no basketball court.
Basketball court.
Where would we put it?
I don't know, but I thought it was a good point, because-
It used to be where the tins courts are.
Yeah.
Yeah, it used to be a court, one there where the tins courts-
So, I thought, I thought that was something that we probably should get as a, as a, um, basketball, if we could find a place to put it in City Park.
You have to have lines.
You know, something that's, we'd never really decide what to do with is where the, Simmons Auditorium used to be.
Mm-hmm.
That's a big flat area and they've used it for performances and things. Since it has those, you know, seating steps, you wonder if that wouldn't even be somewhere to consider to put a court in and they could use that for performances and-
Still, use it for-
Right.
And a good surface?
Right, have a good surface and put goals on, I don't know, probably the east and west end, so it wouldn't interfere with the seating, kind of amphitheater effect.
I thought it was kind of a good idea.
A lot of kids use Dargatz Park to chill.
I know. And there's, and there's, there's those ones, I thought Lakeview, too, and Lions, but there's none in City Park.
Lions is a nice one.
And I thought that was a valid point, so I thought we should look into that. And the other, the other thing they mentioned that I thought was a good idea, what, and several of them mentioned that we don't have a toddler area at our parks. A toddler area being somewhere where, you know, the surface is spongy and that all the surfaces are covered, rounded, so nobody, so when they fall a lot. And, um, I talked to my daughter-in-law and she said lots of times, they do have toddler areas that are kinda confined areas, adjacent to other playground areas. But it was interesting that three or four kids said we needed a toddler area at Dargatz Park specifically, and City Park are the two they mentioned.
Out of the mouths of babes.
But I thought that was a good idea.
It is good.
And they said, and, and one said that, um, we, kids get hurt there and they're, they didn't say the word traumatized, but they said, you know, it stays with them all their life and stuff, so.
I think we need those rusty metal slides for my youth and those merry-go-rounds you'd go like that.
But we should, maybe we can talk to, uh-
Build character.
Yeah, yeah, we can talk to Dale about it and see what he thinks, huh? At the workshop. But I thought, those are a couple of things I thought was a really good idea that the kids provided. So, that's all I have, so we'll move to Keith.
Yeah, don't forget the RSVP for the Christmas party tomorrow. I think tomorrow's the deadline. Is that correct?
Thank you, Keith, yes. Thank you. I'm coming.
Did everybody?
Yes, you can. Me too.
Did everybody else RSVP? I already RSVP'd.
Two.
Okay. Good job, Keith.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Yeah. The hole on North Street's back as bigger as it was before.
I think we should put no semis on that road. What do you think? I'm just kidding.
And I've had a lot of people talk to me and they think the squirrel ought to be black. This is Black Squirrel City. And the squirrel they put down here ought to be black. And if you want to do something, put it in the paper and let people vote on it.
That's a good idea.
That was a suggestion they made.
Yeah.
And a few people talked to me about that squirrel too, that it ought to be black because we're the Black Squirrel City.
They could always do it and, you know, flat black and gloss black and do something creative.
Hey, one of them said you could paint the nut brown or something.
What? I'm sorry, what'd you say?
I wasn't talking about you, Keith. The nut, I played the nut brown, but the squirrel ought to be black.
Yeah.
Not a bunch of fancy colors.
Well, I, I, my was kind of leaning towards David Hammond doing some kind of simple sketch on it. You know, he does all these sketchings that are on the newspaper.
I think you ought to go sketch some of them.
Black and white's kind of his trademark.
Yeah, that's what I meant, so. Anyway, so the first comment was, I lost track, North Street. Where we can move that North Street?
The hole on North Street's back.
We visited it because they patched it and then.
It's expanding to the side.
Yes, it is.
I know the hole.
So, why is there such a weakness right there?